I'll be held for all this meeting of your Newark City Council order for July 17th. I'll please call the votes.
Mr. Marney.
President.
Mr. Ratt.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cos.
Here.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Lang.
Here.
And Mr. Mangus.
Here.
We have everyone here this evening and welcome to Mr. Lang, our newest council member.
Thank you.
So welcome. Please rise and join me in the invitation called by the Plaid Board. Mr. Floyd.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you had granted us. We thank you for all the rights and freedoms that we have in this country. We ask that you be with the citizens in the local community who suffered damage and serious problems from the flooding over the recent days. Be with our military around the world, be with our first responders locally as they have had to deal with some of those problems and as the construction season goes on have to deal with all of the traffic issues. Be with our citizens and give us your guidance as we make decisions for our community tonight. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Next on the agenda we have caucus. That's what we're discussing pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do we have anything? Okay. We'll move on to the minutes of our July 5th, 2017 meeting. Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Ratt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same side. That passes. Thank you. We have three reports this evening, standing committees, one from finance, one from personnel, and one from safety. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Under reports from city officials, we have one from Stephen Johnson, our auditor, operating report for the period ending June 30th, 2017, and one from Barb Jones, our city tax administrator, the income tax revenue reports for the period ending June 30th, 2017. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Under petitions, we have one petition this evening, a petition received by property owners in the Fairway Estates subdivision to upgrade the existing sanitary sewer system and install a new gravity sanitary sewer system in a purposes. That will be held and move on to Mr. Long's side. Next, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for comments from citizens. One is now and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council. This is just your chance to be heard. If anyone would like to speak, just please raise your hand and I will have you come on. Ma'am, could you just give us your name and address for the round?
My name is Kim Beem. That's B-E-E-M. My address is P.O. Box 663, Johnstown, Ohio, 43031. I come before you this evening with two issues that I consider to be of utmost importance. As we all know, in May of this year, there was a tremendous tragedy that was partially caused by or can be attributed to the probation department and the Licken County Municipal Court. And as we all know, trying to sue the municipal court or the probation department would be very difficult and if there were litigation, it would be against the city of Newark. That's why I bring this to your attention. One would think, considering the tremendous tragedy in May, that this would not still be occurring. On June 12th, filed in the Licken County Municipal Clerk of Courts office was a motion for an oral hearing by Christopher Kinsler, Assistant Attorney General for Ohio. In this memorandum, he states the defendant was arrested by the Ohio Attorney General's Office on 4/15/2014 for telecommunication harassment. The truth is, and Jordan Bernard from the probation department has confirmed, the defendant in this case has never, never been arrested for anything. And there was a summons on some charges, but that indictment did not come until 2015, but there was never an arrest. Judge Higgins did not open the file and review it. The probation department did not open the file and review it. They simply signed off on it and it's now before Judge Higgins or will be before Judge Higgins. He approved it as the motion was granted for good cause. How can it be granted for good cause when it's a lie? I'm asking you, I know that Judge Higgins is an elected official. I don't know the structure with the probation department, whether you guys are over the probation department or what, but you do have a law director who should be giving legal advice to these folks. You cannot have this going on. In this instance, no one died, but that doesn't mean someone might not die from this instance. I know this instance very well because because of this, I attempted suicide on June 9th. Now that would be more blood on Judge Higgins' hands and on this, on the city of Newark's hands. Please do not let them bully me to suicide. Do something. If you can't do anything because of elected officials or whatever, you are leaders in this community. Take that leadership and lead. Say this is not acceptable in our community. The second issue I want to bring to your attention, and I don't know if you're aware of this or not, is former city councilwoman Rhonda Loomis was investigated for harassing me while she was working for Southwest Licken Water and Sewer District. She used their computers, falsified a name, harassed me on their computers. She was terminated from that public entity for that behavior. There was no criminal action. There was no criminal action because, as we know, as many of us who've been around a while know, that she and Doug Sasson have a connection which led to him being taken before the Ohio Supreme Court Disciplinary Council. Anyway, he would not charge her. He finally recused himself, but he said he would take it to Columbus City Attorney's Office because they owed him a favor. No charges were ever brought against Ms. Loomis for her crime. Interestingly, the Columbus City Attorney's Office stated that they would fairly look at the case when it came to them from the Lancaster City Attorney's Office. Lancaster was not involved. The only thing we know about Lancaster is the person that I exposed for a sexual harassment situation, Ken Oswald, now works in Lancaster. So I'm asking you to hold your law director accountable for a change. Granted, he's an elected official, but that does not mean that you can't show leadership. If you don't, if it's okay that your former city council people are harassing people and there are people on this council who have seen, I believe, the report from the sheriff's office that proves that Rhonda Loomis harassed me, and she even admitted to it, to the detective who looked at it. If you don't care about that, if it's okay to harass people and, you know, people that are represented, and my guess is that's why she's not running again because she knew this would come out, at least protect those of us who have, when the courts say things that are not true, don't drive us to death. That's all I'm asking. Don't kill people because you're not willing to act. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments?
My name is Chris Tolliver, T-O-L-L-I-V-E-R, and I live at 381 Claritin Street. My mailing address is P.O. Box 4414, Newark, 43058. I come here today to find out information on a property that's been sitting vacant in my neighborhood, and I have pictures and I have tax information to prove that the bank does not own it. It's owned by an individual. I talked to this individual a couple of weeks ago and he said, "I have," he says, "As far as I'm concerned, the bank told me I still own it, but I have no, I'm not going to do anything with it. There are no utilities. The utility company has come out and taken all the utilities out of the house. The grass that has been mowed, my husband and I have been taking care of it because we live across the street and I don't want to look at it. My mother has talked to a gentleman that's come down a couple of times and taken pictures of the house. He said the reason he's taking pictures of the house is just to make sure that nobody lives there." Well, the gentleman that I talked to, the city owned the house. He claims he's still getting bills from the city of Newark for property maintenance that he's not paying. He's obviously not making house payments. He's not paying taxes. This house is just sitting there and we get to look at it. Oh, by the way, he was there to pick up, he had a key to the front door, and he was there to pick up a couple of bundles of shingles that he left in the basement because where he's living now, the shingles had been blown off. So he was there to get his shingles and he loaded them up in the back of his car and he left. So I'd like to know who is responsible for getting this taken care of other than me? And if somebody's getting paid for maintenance on the property, it should be me and my husband, not the city of Newark.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you tell us the address of that property again?
The address is 374 Claritin.
Thank you. Anyone else for this section of citizens' comments?
Wait till the end. Maybe I'll get a half-assed answer for what my question is.
I would doubt it. You'll get the same answer you'll get right now. Probably not any answer if that's the question.
Okay, I'll get up there then. I'm not used to doing this, so bear with me. Jim Foster, 11903 Dietrich Court. For the last 50 years, I think. I've fought for the railroad crossing on 30th Street, and now I'm up here fighting for the 21st Street. And I've heard for the last eight years, they're going to do it this year, this year, this year. When's it going to be done? It gets worse and worse, and I'm tired of my front end getting knocked out of alignment. You go over at three or four miles an hour. And while I'm talking about that one, I'm going back to 30th Street, and the rail bed is dropped down below the street level. Then you have to slow down unless you're going to hit a dip again. So the city or somebody needs to go in there and chip that street down to the level with the rail bed. And then, are you familiar with, oh, what's that, River Road, Route 16, 161? There's going to be an accident there and it's going to be dangerous, and these people running up there 70, 80 mile an hour, then all of a sudden, somebody's going to turn off and go on River Road. Close the cotton picking thing up. I called Mr. Thompson. I don't know if you've heard of him. He's with the transportation here in Newark. Talked to him about it, and he said, "Well, we've been thinking about it." Well, thinking's going to be too late. Now, people are getting off. Don't go to exit lane and there, close it. People are getting off and then they're coming this way and getting back on 161. But then people go to the light that live up there. They don't need that street. And let's see. Several years ago, there was a mention in the Newark, or the advocate, about a Waffle House coming into the area. So if anybody's ever heard about having, getting one, I'd really appreciate it if we could have one because it's one of the nicest restaurants and best food I've ever had. And I'm shaking. Hang on a minute. Oh, I run over to Columbus from here several times a month to the doctor's office in Columbus and out 161. And ever since they put this new traffic highway in out through there, and 16 has opened up and one all goes on the 161 going either east or west, it's a racetrack. I can leave Cherry Valley Road and be out by 3:10, and traffic will catch up to me running 90, 100 miles an hour. They need more, they need more patrol going either way. So, thank you.
Thank you. I will say, I would agree with you on the Waffle House. And Mr. Ratt, am I correct that the railroad tracks, we're not allowed to do anything with railroad tracks unless the railroad does it? Is that correct?
That's correct. And Councilman Blake and I were in a meeting earlier this year with the railroad talking about 21st Street. And Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, they made a commitment to do it this year.
I've heard that for the last eight years.
I know.
I call the railroad people myself, and then there's the manager here in Newark. And I call him, and they say, "Well, get back with the mayor."
They've been pretty good since we've been meeting with them once a year. Councilwoman Hall and I met with them once. Jeremy's been with me a couple of times, and they make a commitment, they follow through.
What can be done with that 30th Street? Can they shave that down?
We'll have to call them and talk to them about it.
Yeah, because it's getting lower.
No, I got you. I heard you. Thank you, Mr. Ratt. Anyone else for this first section?
My name is Greg Renda, and I'm at 2239 Hornsville. And I'm here to voice my concern about the city's special assessment procedure. I here in my hand have information that was sent to me from Brian Moorhead, the city engineer, which says that in an area, if petitioned by property owners, 75% of all owners in the area need to agree or want the project to be put in place. And if 75% of the property owners in the area do not want the project to be put in place, the other way that a city could go about doing that is through a forced assessment. And this is from Ohio Code 727-6. And then from Ohio Code 727-12, it says if 75% of individuals in the property area do not want the project or do not sign the petition for a project, that the city can go through a forced assessment, which requires three-quarters of the council to vote on that issue. So the reason I bring this up is because in the Hornsville area, in the Fairway Estates area, earlier in this meeting, there was a petition by people in the Horns, excuse me, the Fairway Estates area that want a project done. It's basically a sewer line connecting their neighborhood to the gravity flow system that would run along all the way around, along Hornsville. So there are 69 total properties that would be affected by this project. I voiced my concern at another meeting, maybe in February, a couple of months ago, and I brought it to the attention of the folks that are running this petition. And basically what happened is that they and the city attorney and the water department consulted legal advice, and what the result of that consultation was that they were going to rework and rewrite the petition so that they would exclude out of those 69 households that will eventually have to pay for this project. They reduced the petition roll call to 44 individuals in Fairway Estates neighborhood, and then they made it optional for those 25 other houses that are along Hornsville. So in essence, what has happened is that there were 69 households in the first petition roll. Now it was reduced so that essentially, a certain amount of people that will be affected by this project will do not have a chance to be in that, determine if this project goes forward. So basically what's happening is that they will be able to get this project done without achieving the 51 property owners' agreement to this project. So my concern is with the city and the procedure for a special assessment project. If Ohio Code 727-6 says you need 75% of all owners in the area that will pay for this project to agree, and this petition that was submitted earlier does not have that, I'm concerned that we're rewriting the rules to make so this project work or this petition work that is not in consideration or taking in consideration the Ohio Revised Code. And that's pretty much what I wanted to state. So I have concern that we're rewriting the code or rewriting the petition area to suit a small subset of the individuals that will eventually be affected by this petition for a project, for the sewer project for Fairway Estates and Hornsville. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else for this first section? Okay. Moving on, we'll move on to ordinances on the first reading 17-30.
Ordinance 17-30 by Mr. Marney, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, and ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the Department of Adult Probation by creating the classification of probation officer specialist and probation officer of adult probation and setting the compensation therefore and abolishing three probation officer, two physicians, and seven probation officer, one physicians.
1730 will be held for two weeks for our second reading. Actually, a little longer than two weeks. It will be held till the August, what's the first meeting, August 7th meeting. Next, we've got resolutions on the second reading, 17-44.
Resolution 17-44 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marney, Mr. Ratt. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 17-44. What is your wish?
Yes, Mr. President.
Ms. Hall?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Hall?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 17-44? Seeing none, often it's called a roll of vote.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
17-44 passes 10-0. Next, we'll move on to 17-45.
Resolution 17-45 by Mr. Marney and Mr. Ratt. A resolution waiving the licensing fee prescribed by Section 812.03 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Newark for the operation of circuits by the Heath Mound Builders Kiwanis Club.
You've heard the second reading of 17-45. What is your wish? Seeing none, not a fail for lack of a first or second. We'll move on to 17-47.
Resolution 17-47 by Mr. Marney, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Ratt. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Newark to enter into a community development block grant-funded subrecipient agreement with the year-in-after named organizations to carry out activities included within Newark's fiscal year 2017 Community Development Block Grant One Year Action Plan.
You've heard the second reading of 17-47. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marney?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 17-47.
Motion by Mr. Marney, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 17-47? Seeing none, often it's called a roll of vote.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
17-47 passes 10-0. Next, we'll move on to 17-48.
Resolution 17-48 by Mr. Ratt, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marney, Mr. Frazier. A resolution authorizing the conveyance of certain real property now owned by the city of Newark, Ohio, to Newark Development Partners as its agent for industrial, commercial, distribution, and research.
You've heard the second reading of 17-48. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Ratt?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 17-48.
Motion by Mr. Ratt, second by Mr. Cos. Is there any discussion on 17-48? Seeing none, often it's called a roll of vote.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
17-48 passes 10-0. Now we read the resolutions on the first reading and our final resolution, 17-49.
Resolution 17-49 by Mr. Marney, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, and Mr. Ratt. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
17-49.
Mr. President?
Mr. Marney?
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading roll on 17-49.
Motion by Mr. Marney to waive the two-day reading roll, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marney?
Yes. These departments need these supplies as quickly as possible, so we need to expedite this.
Thank you, Mr. Marney. I'll please call the roll and waive the two-day reading roll.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Two-day reading roll has been waived. Mr. Marney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt Resolution 17-49.
Motion by Mr. Marney, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on 17-49? Seeing none, often it's called a roll of vote.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
And that concludes our legislations this evening. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our second section, second section. That's hard to say. Little comments from citizens. Do we have anyone else?
Can I ask one question? Who's my councilman?
Tell them your name and address and then we'll find out.
Jim Foster, 903 Dietrich Court.
I imagine it's Mr. Mangus, I think.
Yes.
Who is it?
I think it's Mr. Mang.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Anyone from the administration seat here? Call off the assistant law director.
I will pass. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Marney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Need to call a finance committee meeting for July 31st, and without a pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marney, Mr. Ratt.
I'll call a service committee meeting, and without a question.
Thank you, Mr. Ratt, Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since this is the first meeting, I want to offer my welcome to Mr. Lang. So now, Sunday after church, he'll have someone else to harass. So, welcome. I do want to thank Director Rhodes. We've been talking about South 21st Street and that railroad crossings for, as you said, for many years, but I do feel as though the meetings we've recently been having have been productive. And I kind of, I'm kind of like with you, I'm waiting for the dirt to turn over there before I believe it, but we did get some good commitments from the railroad, and so I'm hopeful that they will fulfill their word to what they gave to the city officials. That's right. But I do want to thank publicly Director Rhodes for all the work and engagement that you've helped on that process. Finally, I do want to, I mean, I'm sitting here, you know, we did have this petition on our agenda this evening, talking about the Fairway Estates subdivision sewer line project. And at some point, it would be nice to get, you know, what is the process for this? You know, they, because there was a petition that first went through, they reduced the number of properties in the petition to go for the second petition. So it would be nice if the law director's office or someone could provide to us, and then even tonight, it was on our agenda tonight, but what, I mean, we didn't really take any action. So what does that mean? You know, what's, you know, the signatures get turned into the engineer's office, and then it now goes to where the water department? I just don't know. And so it would be nice if the law director's office could provide some, you know, what is that process? And so if you could provide that or if someone at your office, I'm looking at you, but that would be great. So that would be, I mean, it's Fairway Estates, and, you know, it does seem like, you know, where is the fairness in this? If it's going for one petition and they're reducing it to another one, but, so if we could get some answers there, that'd be helpful.
So I will have them put together some sort of packet that can kind of explain the process. And there's different percentages for different actions. So I was only involved in the process to the beginning, but we can try to provide some more information to council about the process and how that works.
Thank you.
I think that's a very good suggestion. That would be helpful.
Thank you.
We might have that very well. Thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Bub?
Thank you. Just wanted to welcome Mr. Lang again. Be a nice addition to council. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. Mr. Cost?
I just want to say what a great weekend we had for Newark with the local heroes and the Clydesdales, and then the Jazz and Ribs, and the Car Show. We had a lot of activity in Newark. That's sure nice to see it happening, and it's a great place to bathe. Congratulations. John, welcome.
Thank you.
And Marmee. And Marmee. Mrs. Floyd?
I too was going to mention the Jazz and Ribs Fest and the Clydesdales, and welcome, Jonathan. We're glad you're here. I do want to mention, Final Friday for July is coming up on July 28th. On the Final Friday, the Midland is having a movie for this month. They're doing, excuse me, Singing in the Rain for citizens six, over 60, and residents of Licken County, paid for by the Senior Citizens Levy. It's free, and it's five and six dollars otherwise. Kind of neat to be in an old movie theater and huge screen and see a movie. But it's a history and art walk. They're going to have artists down the two alleys on the north and south sides of the square. The alley that goes toward the Canal Market on the, on the south side of the square, and the alley that goes down by the Golden Lock on the north side of the square. And then some people will have artists in front of their, or inside their businesses. There will be musicians as well. There are going to be some local historians in the arcade, and a few other key spots around to explain some of the historical events that have happened in Newark. And it's just a fun time to find out a lot about what's going on in Newark. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mrs. Treager?
Yes, Mr. President. So the H.H.C.A. will be having a North Street Park picnic in the park, July 30th, from 2:00 to 4:00. Members of council are invited. There's been a recent project with the H.H.C.A. to put a community garden in there, and so we actually had vegetables, and so that's a mark of success. So everybody's invited to come to the cookout and, and meet the neighborhood and be involved. I'd like to thank the engineer's office and the service director for releasing the 2017 paving schedule that we have planned and identified. Pearson is on that list, which is, is a great benefit to the city because of how much to use and how much we get back in feedback of how that needs to be repaired. John, welcome to council. Ms. Tolliver, feel free to see me afterwards about Claridan, and make sure we put you in the right touch with the right people to see what we can do about that vacant property. I imagine that they are not paying the, the maintenance fees, the city, that they're getting billed for. So I don't think that there's any, any money going to the city, but we want to make sure